The Broad Street Market is more than just a place to buy fresh food. It is a cornerstone of our community, a hub for small businesses, and a reflection of our city's history and resilience. Now let me be clear. My administration is fully committed to see the brick building restored and thriving once again. That is our first and foremost priority. We are not moving forward with any other plans until we ensure that the heart of this market is rebuilt, stronger and safer than ever. Now I understand that many of you are seeking answers, and I'm here tonight to listen, to address your concerns, and to reaffirm that we are not just talking about progress. We are making it happen. We will continue to work with vendors, your stakeholders, and the community to make sure that this process is transparent, accountable, and above all, successful. Tonight, we have a panel of individuals who can speak directly to the next steps and also the challenges that lay ahead, and how we can work together to bring this vision to life. I encourage open and constructive dialogue. I also ask that everyone, please, please be respectful, so that all who would like to speak have an opportunity. This market belongs to all of us. Thank you again for being here, and I look forward to the discussion ahead. But before I leave the podium, I'd like to introduce all the individuals who are going to be speaking tonight. We have Brian Ederline, Harrisburg Fire Chief. We have David Baker, Director of Facilities. We have Peter Canelo, Murphy and Dittenhafer, he's the architect. We have Stephen Wilt, who's Alexander Building Construction. And we have Tito Teck, who is the Broad Street Market Vendor Representative. And now it's turned over to Chief Ederline.
That very same day, July the 10th, we started our fire investigation, and as everybody's aware, we narrowed it down and said it was the ceiling fan in the eastern side of the building that started the fire. And that was July 10th. That afternoon of July 10th, we had the honor of having Josh Shapiro do a press conference with us. And as you'll recall, the city and the state committed a lot of resources and said, "We're going to do a lot of things to bring this market back to life." Again, this is everybody's market, not just a Broad Street Market alone. This is everybody's, the community's, the entire region's market. On July 11th, we penned a letter, as I did as the emergency manager, to the standholders for Small Business Association Loans through Pima, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. So when we have a fire or a disaster that affects more than four businesses that are contiguous to each other, there's a potential to get monies in a form of a loan, not a grant. And that's the important thing to remember. These were loans, not grants, that would be available. We also started discussions that July 10th on where to move the market. And some of the things that we started talking about were, where are some other places that we could temporarily put this? Knowing that we are in a food desert in the city, what can we do to provide that food that is so integral for our, especially the senior citizens living in a couple of block regis around here? We're going to lose this microphone. As loud as I am, I probably don't need it. So we started having, we looked at the farm show complex. We looked at a couple of other places that just didn't fit. And then we started talking with where we ended up with the tent, which came a few weeks, probably a couple of months later. We started working with the city insurance on July 11th to figure out what that loss was going to look like. And we knew it was covered.
But what does that look like as far as, you know, as far as reimbursements? What does it look like as far as coverage? And I should point out, as I was preparing, I thought, when was the last time the city went through a fire? I deal with fires nearly weekly, right? And I deal with a lot of uninsured properties. And I know what that's like. And I know dealing with city residents that have insurance, the frustrations that they deal with. The frustrations dealing with insurance and procurement ended up on our doorstep for the city. And the last time that I can find where we had a fire that affected city property that was a loss was in 1979, where we had a fire on Front Street at what is now the Waterworks Building. They were using it as the electric shop. So David probably, there's some history around here about that. But that was a significant event for Harrisburg at the time. So we hadn't had, you know, two generations of folks hadn't dealt with a fire that affected the city itself since 1979. So we started, again, we worked with, working with standholder insurance companies. A lot of the standholders had insurance that was required by the market, but they didn't have business loss insurance. There's a lot of insurance policies that they didn't have. And unfortunately, throughout the city, throughout the region, we see folks, and this is a reminder for everybody in this room, insurance does have a cost to it, but when you need it, you really need it. And a lot of folks found out, unfortunately, that some of those policies that they didn't have in place really cost them, literally some of their business. So fast forwarding to August 10th, we had a joint scene examination. There were about 20 fire investigators that came from all over, from Maryland, from New Jersey, from New York, Pennsylvania, the Pittsburgh area, to do a joint scene examination. We narrowed down to where we believed the fire started. They did not like our analogy that the fan started the fire, so they went a different route. They collected, there was about 15 tubs of evidence that we collected from the building. At that time, the building, the city still had no access to the building. I think that's important to understand. We were not permitted to be in the building. It was literally padlocked by the insurance company. And if you remember, we had the fence around it. We were allowed in the unburnt side, but everybody had to sign in. We had to keep a record of that for the insurance company because it was an open investigation case. So we did the joint scene examination, collected all that evidence. That's when the building was fenced off, was off limits, on November 15th. So the whole way fast forwarding to November 15th is when we finally were able to analyze the evidence that was collected from the scene. So this wasn't the city's evidence that we were dealing with. This was the insurance company. This joint scene examination and the evidence collected all went to Pittsburgh in plastic tubs, and we literally analyzed this with X-ray machines. We spent about 10 hours in a facility and x-rayed every one of those pieces of evidence that were collected by the different insurance investigators. Again, reemphasize, that was November 15th. So we are surely six, seven months past the date of the fire now, where we're finally looking at things. Again, the building is still off limits at this point. And at that point, we didn't find anything. The examiners didn't find anything. The electrical engineers and the different professional folks that examine at the literally microscopic level found nothing to point anything with the evidence that they brought back. And it was obviously frustrating for us. And again, the building remained off limits. December 15th is when they finally issued a statement back to the city of Harrisburg that said, "At this point, it's still an open investigation. However, we are ruling this fire to be undetermined based upon the evidence that was collected during that joint scene examination back in August." There was still a potential at that time in December that they may want to come back in and take some more evidence. Fortunately or unfortunately, that never came to fruition. So the insurance company never came back. And it was shortly thereafter that they did finally release the building back to us. So, you know, a decent amount of time that, you know, went by there. You know, so I'm going to back up now. I talked about, you know, we had the emergency. So a lot of things I can do under an emergency declaration. I have a lot of latitude when it comes to spending and procurement. There's a lot of the red tape that we deal with in the city that is cut. So July and August timeframe, I found a supplier, which is the tent that we have currently up on the lot. And that was installed the week of September the 11th. That took, we ordered that thing, started that process in July, got that finalized in August for a September install. So you see where these timelines start to add up at. Things don't happen quickly. And then December 15th, we had, we were given advice of legal that we needed to not use the emergency anymore because we were past the deadline for an emergency and things had to go to bid. And I think that's where the frustration from you folks really come in. And it's the frustration that we deal with as a city. And I was told by a very intelligent city solicitor that government is meant to be effective, not efficient. And I think that's important to remember. Effective, but not efficient. And so when it comes to procuring things, there's a lot of things that you have to do in that. And everybody remembers how that procurement went. We put some things out for bid, we didn't get any bids. And that's frustrating, right? And that was some of the issues that we had. And unfortunately, there was nothing at that point that I could do because we were outside of the emergency declaration. And I had a couple of other things that I was involved in, just to give you an idea of where we were. Some of the first electrical components that we needed to get the market tent to fruition, we were told we're going to take 18 months to procure. So if, you know, remember pre-COVID, we used to be able to go to the store and buy almost anything we wanted. Eggs were only 99 cents a dozen then too, right? But we see that even in the fire department today, where this post-COVID world, procurement absolutely stinks. A fire truck that used to take 12 to 13 months to build is now 48 months. I'm not sure what I'm doing four years from now, but when I pay for the fire truck today, I'm not getting it for another four years. And that was a lot of the issues that we dealt with. And I have specifically written PP&L here. That was that 18 to 24 month timeframe that they were saying that it was going to take to get those electrical components. Luckily, we were able to pull some strings and PP&L was able to help us out. But that was some of the frustrating things that we dealt with. That along with Capital Region Water, trying to negotiate with them on who's going to make the street cuts. I mean, those original Capital Region Water bills were going to be in excess of $100,000 because of the way things were done. So it was, again, we weren't under the emergency declaration, so I couldn't say, "Yeah, let's just do it." We had to go through the proper channels. And unfortunately, that's what took so long to get that tent up and operating. Fortunately for everybody, on March 27th, that week, we were able to open a tent up to get everybody up and running. You got a question, sir?
I do, sir. Can you tell us why there was no effort to put any sort of tarp over the open space during the time the insurance company had controlled the building? And you would think they'd want to protect the evidence, but it sounds like there was a lot of weather damage to the building during that time.
I don't think, you know, look, it was already destroyed. And they had, that was not their care. They knew it was going to be a total loss to begin with, and everything was going to have to be replaced. So there was nothing that they were going to preserve. If we have a fire in your house, you know, one of the things we'll do, we'll cut a hole in the roof and, you know, we'll tarp that, we'll tarp things inside of your house for you to preserve that. With the damage that was done there, the insurance company, again, it was their call not to do that. That wasn't the city's call. Nor did we, and I think it's important to emphasize, nor did we have the ability to do that even if we wanted to. Way in the back.
I have a question. Why was the emergency declaration not extended to help with the procurement?
So you have to have a reason to have an emergency declaration, and you can't use it to usurp the procurement process. And under post-COVID world, back pre-COVID, you could have an emergency declaration stay open for a long time. The legislature in Pennsylvania changed that post-COVID to, I believe it's now seven, seven to 14 days with one extension. So it's a very narrow period of time. And you got to have a reason to have that declaration too. You can't do it just to usurp the bidding process because then we'll have all the contractors suing us because we're usurping the bidding process.
To follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you hadn't had the, if you hadn't been moving forward on the tent, would the procurement issues and the emergency declaration just for the brick building have been streamlined?
No, not, because at the time, we had no control of the brick building. Again, and we had, that was, you know, something I'm trying to emphasize. We had no control until December of the brick building, late December, right before Christmas. So even if we wanted to do something, we couldn't. Because the insurance company owned it at that point, right? And we, the one thing that's important, this is dealing with the Broad Street Market, but this is also dealing with general knowledge of the way insurance works. If you go in and start to destroy the scene, you risk losing your insurance money, right? And that's for a homeowner as well. And I've unfortunately seen that happen here in Harrisburg. Go ahead. Good? All right, that's all I have for my involvement. But obviously, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. Insurance related, you know, we worked with, we worked with the state insurance department on this. We have some good connections there, you know, trying to make sure that everybody was taken care of. I know there was frustration with a lot of the standholders as it pertained to insurance. Insurance is not an easy thing to navigate. And the city found itself there. And it was really a learning thing for us. We learned a lot of the frustrations, because we were involved with it, that you as residency, when you have car accident or a fire in your home.
Could you have a follow up?
Okay.
Do you think the cost benefit of moving forward just without the insurance and making sure the brick building was up and running and then going from there instead of through the other avenues would have been more efficient?
I'm not going to speak for the mayor on that, but I'll give you, I'll give you the Ederlineism on it. There was a, you know, I believe a $10 million insurance policy. So taxpayers not on the hook for 10 million versus taxpayers being on the hook for 10 million, that's a no-brainer to me. Every one of you deserves to have that insurance that we pay annually for, protect us. And to throw that out the window would be a detriment to the taxpayer. All right. Very good.
All right, hello. Hi, everyone. My name is David Baker. I'm the Facilities Director here for the city of Harrisburg. I'll make this real quick. We will enter, or have our two architects from Murphy and Dittenhafer come up here. And they are going to show you a very quick PowerPoint presentation of some renderings that they've designed over this design period. And then after that, we can kind of shut down the projector and do more of a question and answer situation. Give you guys, you know, whatever questions you have, we can hopefully answer them for you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pete Canelo. I'm from Murphy and Dittenhafer Architects. And this is Rebecca McCormick, also from Murphy and Dittenhafer Architects. I'm the main project manager on the project. And I've been a city resident all my life. Growing up at the market with my parents throughout the years, was very devastated when I heard about the fire. And then fast forward to a few months ago, we seen the RFP for the Architectural Services for the project convinced our firm to go after it. And we were successful, and we were able to start our efforts in October. Since then, we were working on more of a master plan to understand the campus as a whole and the needs as a whole. And we'll look at that a little bit later here. We'll do a quick overview of the site plan here. We have the brick building that is on the east side of the property. And the very far east is where the fire occurred. We have the central building, I mean, the central plaza component. We have the stone building component, the tent structure that we were talking about, and then the parking lot to support the Broad Street Market. And then there's also here Fulton Street that we'll talk about later, that we're looking to vacate as a part of the project as well. So this is an Axon, an Axon metric drawing that we, or diagram. Very diagrammatic here. And it's kind of outlining the campus and the components of the project. As the mayor alluded to, our main priority is the brick building. It's always been the brick building. We just needed to understand what spaces were needed in the brick building and try to get some of the mechanical and other support spaces into other spaces so we could maximize the floor plan for the vendors. There is also an east plaza design that we're looking to expand on. Again, this is where Fulton Street was being vacated. So we're looking for more of a flexible space here for outdoor seating, dining, and then have pop-up public events as well. And then the stone building. Part of the stone building originally, we were looking to do the envelope upgrades. And we're also looking to do MEP, or Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing upgrades to the building, the stone building as well. And then from our master planning, we understood there was this square foot need. So that's when we started exploring the ideas of having, placing a central pavilion in the central plaza. Below grade would be a central plant, Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing, that would both serve the stone building and also, I mean, the stone building here and then the brick building that's on the east side. We're also, there's a large volume and space requirements because we're looking to cool in both buildings. So it just won't be heat anymore because of, if you guys remember, in the summer, it gets very hot in both of these buildings. So we'll be looking to cool them as well.
So just to give you a little bit of historical context, again, the brick building, as it stood in the 1880s, we've been studying a lot of the historic details and the historic components of the building so that we can, you know, properly restore the brick building to how it once stood. The picture in the upper right-hand corner is actually a structure that no longer exists, but once stood in the plaza between the stone and brick buildings and was used for vendor space.
So we started our exercise really focusing on what the, how the brick building operated prior to the fire. So we studied from photos and what we could do from the internet. Basically, we outlined all the vendors. And then there was roughly, the vendor sizes range anywhere from 140 square feet up to 2,000 square feet. Another thing to note, the building is 19,000 square feet in total. And roughly 6,200 square feet was used for circulation. And then there was roughly 750 square feet of public and loose seating throughout the building. These are just some of the images prior to the fire. This is showing the existing mezzanine that was there previously. A nice clear story, letting the natural light into the bright, open space. So one thing we started looking at is modularity in the vendor, in the vendor sizes. Because we understood that there's sometimes overturn in the actual vendors. So we tried to look at certain spaces and the idea was, so if a medium-sized vendor needed to increase, they could look at adding the small vendor that was adjacent to them to make a larger vendor. So you'll see some of that in our floor plan diagrams on the next slide.
So we're in early, very early phases of designing the actual floor plan layout of the building. It's going to be completely rethought from the way it worked before the fire in order to really maximize vendor space, vendor flexibility, and just the way that the public circulates through the space and experiences the space. So this is the conceptual diagram that we've developed thus far with, you know, a certain ratio of large vendor stalls to medium to small. We've offset the circulation so that you have deeper stalls along the whole north side and then more shallow stalls along the south side. We have an area for public seating in the middle. And we are going to look at doing an approximately 1,500 square foot mezzanine that will be used for public seating. So this, we're really working hard to push this design further now and really work out a solid floor plan. In conjunction with designing the interior spaces, which will be, you know, fully upgraded with new mechanical, electrical, plumbing, safety, security, fire protection. We're also doing a lot of studies around the exterior of the building to... Yes, you have a question?
Could we go back to the last slide and just detail where that mezzanine is concepted to be there?
Sure. Yeah, so one of the things that we've been studying along with our structural engineer is how to support the long linear masonry walls. They need extra bracing, especially after the fire. And they need a lot of repair work too. But the mezzanine, we are locating within the non-burnt section of the building, sort of counterintuitive, because we found that the mezzanine, the sidewalls that run perpendicular to the long walls will actually help brace the lateral walls. So it's actually helping us structurally. But we also think that that location is going to really help engage the public. You're going to be right in the mix of all of the vendor stalls, and they'll be seating up in the mezzanine, and you'll be able to look down at everything that's going on below. And there's also going to be public seating below on the main floor.
So would it be kind of on the, do you remember? South side only or the north side?
This is the north side, actually. This is, right here is where the existing masonry wall is. This is the severely burnt side, and then the side that was partially burned is over here. So it's roughly in the center of the west side of the building.
And it is, the mezzanine will only be on one side of the building. So the mezzanine will restrict the height of everything below. So we're going to be tucking all of the utility-type spaces beneath the mezzanine, the restrooms, the, any storage, so that the open double-height space of the rest of the building will be used for vendor space. So with the masonry restoration, we have a lot of specialists on our team. We're going to be doing masonry...
Mortar analysis.
Thank you, mortar analysis. Because we want to make sure that we properly treat the mortar, the brick, all of the exterior components of the building to preserve the longevity of the building. The brick has some deterioration just because of the age of the building, but also deterioration due to the fire. So there's a lot of preservation that needs to happen, a lot of stabilization. We are looking at replacing windows, doors. We need a new roof on the building. So everything around the exterior of the building will be preserved to look like the historic building originally did. But with modern windows, modern, you know, modern windows, modern doors, fully insulated to meet the energy efficiency requirements of modern codes.
I have a question on the windows, specifically the third-story windows.
Yes.
Are they going to be historically accurate in their function? And as I hear "modern," I'm looking to see it actually functioning like they used to open? And also, the muntens, not decorative, but actually functional?
Yes.
Where it's, they're actually dividing the panels of the glass rather than just those strips that go down and look like it?
Well, we are definitely going to be documenting the historic windows and replicating that with modern windows that will be insulated windows. So it is, all of the styles and rails and mutton sizes and details of the windows will look like they did historically. However, it is nearly impossible to get a fully divided light like you had historically on an insulated window. So there'll be probably a simulated divided light.
So I actually own a historic house. And it's basically a matter of, from my knowledge, is a matter of how much you want to pay for the windows. So there are windows that you can get, you have to pay more for them though, where the muntens are actually divided. And it's not just, because I know historic buildings, and it's not just a strip where, I'm going to tell the difference if I'm looking at it. And I believe that the historic integrity of a building is very important. I don't think that is where we should be cutting money on anything. So, but somebody like me who looks at the history of the buildings is going to notice that. And it's not that it doesn't exist, it's just that it costs more.
I would, I totally understand your concern for the historic integrity. We'll say the scale of these windows, not the clear story, but the main floor windows are very large windows. And we are proposing that they'll be fixed windows. So we are integrating heating and air conditioning into the building. So we don't need the windows to be operable like they once were.
Well, that's not historic then.
Yeah, it's not historically accurate then.
That's not historic, and everybody's shot there for all its time and never had a problem.
And also, there are buildings on Second Street. I know they have replacement windows, they're historic buildings. And they do have the dividers, the way that they're supposed to. to be, not just the simulated ones. So, I mean, I can tell you the addresses of these buildings if you wanted to, just for reference.
Okay.
Also, sorry, with the, because we are with the insurance money, does that relate to how we're going to restore it? We're going to restore the building to historical accuracy with the insurance money and does that impact how you choose the products?
It'll be restored in a cohesive manner.
Historically accurate though?
Maybe I'm not understanding the question. The restoration is not just dependent on the insurance money, I guess.
Do you have a, somebody who specializes in historic conservation?
Yeah, we have them on our team, yes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering what they're thinking about, what they say about the simulated muntens rather than the actual muntens that the buyer of the panels is class. And the functionality of their store windows, because that was huge, that was something I enjoyed all the time, was the fact that they opened for the circulation of the building. Historic buildings were designed a certain way because there wasn't air conditioning back then to circulate the, you know, the air to the building. I'm not saying there shouldn't be air conditioning or be moderns in that regard, but I, as a historic, modern expert in history, however, I appreciate it and I've been, you know, living in, you know, the city for almost twenty years and I've looked, I'm looking, I'm expecting this from this project in not just rebuilding, but actual conservation of the building to historic accuracy.
Yeah, quite frankly, I don't care if it has air conditioning or not.
But, the vendors do. So, to get back to the window question, we are in our very early stages of studying all of this, so there's a lot of work to be done and we're going to address those concerns as we move forward.
Is it impacting the public and the community with each step as to what your final decision is on these decisions? I believe that that's something that's important to more people than just myself.
I believe the mayor has planned regular updates as the project progresses.
I don't have any penny on this.
Right.
We have a commitment from the governor, which I'm making him on my date. No money disposed, spared for any part of this historic reservation.
I assume that if there's public money in this project, it will be reviewed by the state historic preservation office because it is a national risk to property.
It is, yes.
So that's on your horizon as a step that you will pursue.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Question over here.
Well, I think my question kind of ties into what you asked. I mean, whenever any of us in the city want to make improvements, we have, you know, being in a historic district, we have to go through the process.
Yep.
And I'm assuming that this also has to go under that same scrutiny as well.
Would unopenable windows pass that scrutiny?
Windows are a very touchy subject when it comes to historical review, so I think we'll do, you know, whatever is asked of us to...
I live in Midtown and there was a house down the street from me, they put vinyl windows in and the owners had to take the windows out because they weren't wood.
I have a friend who lives in Midtown and maybe even stopped twenty years ago and had to replace the double front doors on their home. But they had to put back what was original, but they couldn't put it back. So they actually had to have a carpenter make them in replica, almost identical to what they were.
We run into that all the time.
That's what we want to see for our markets.
And that is what we want to show you too.
And actually, almost sure, part of our community actually do that sort of wood work as well. So it's not that it's not out there, it's just, does the city want, or does whoever the entity that is paying for this want to pay for it to be done properly and historically with historic accuracy? Because the community is watching.
This slide here, we were just looking at, as the windows, the doors are important to hit, to give back to the historical nature, so we're looking at...
We're looking at existing photos and existing drawings to figure out what the existing panels for the doors were. There's various transoms that were added over time or different arrangements. So we're studying, trying to find the original one. And then we're looking to make the transom portion the energy efficient while still retaining the door, the wood doors. And the way we're getting around with the energy code is, we would do vestibules and then that's where we'd get our energy efficiency would be inside the actual vestibules.
Interior of the building?
On the interior, yeah, on the interior side, I'm sorry. Yep, similar to what was previously there. And these were just temporary vendor, I fit out ideas that we're working with our consultant, our kitchen consultant on with. And that's our presentation.
Thank you.
How did you come up with, or who did you consult with, to come up with the idea to close in the area between the buildings?
The area between the buildings.
The idea, I think the city had long been exploring ways to provide shade in the open plaza because I know that it gets very hot during many months. It's really totally exposed to sun right now. And also, we were looking at ways to provide additional vendor space, whether it's seasonal, temporary pop-up, a covered structure would allow for a more usable space. I think that was the driving force.
We enjoy using the space as it is. I would love to see that building, but possibly on one of the many vacant lots in Midtown that are available. Trees are really good for, you know, shade, keeping the temperature down. The city could handle learning that.
And I thought about a pergola, which vines growing up and which provides lovely shade.
Did the Broad Street Market Association request the extra vendor space?
No, not the Broad Street Market, let.
How do you know that there's a need for more vendor space?
So as far as the middle vendor space goes, it's not just vendor space. I think it would be remiss not to look at this as an opportunity for community space. There's nothing saying it couldn't be a rentable space. It couldn't be a revenue generator for the market. It couldn't be an area that families could hold large-scale birthday parties or wedding venues that the vendors could benefit from if they were doing catering jobs or the public couldn't benefit from because they were in close proximity to individuals that could supply all the needs for them. There's really no, I mean, there's a limit to it, but there is so much opportunity that we could utilize a middle space like this for because we don't have a particular building set in stone. We don't have a particular look set in stone. It's a placeholder for possibility. So when you see pictures of these renderings, they're very infantile. So if you ask about, do we need additional vendor space, it's, you know, why limit ourselves if we have the ability to build a very cost-effective structure with very, very, you know, numerous possibilities to use that space for? So, could we use it as an open air space with no conditioning whatsoever when it's beautiful out and have any sort of glass doors up and you're like you're outside and you can pull your trailers in for space or you could use it for birthday parties or you could use it for educational events or you name it, yes. Could you take this space and use it in the middle of winter time when it's thirty degrees outside? Absolutely. You know, could you use it when it's pouring down rain? Could pop-up vendors or vendors that are just getting started bring all their goods and supplies into this area and we close the doors at nighttime when it's closed and they don't need to pack everything up and take it home with them? I mean, there's, all I'm saying is there are many, many possibilities for this. I do not know what they all are. I don't think any of us in here, I mean, everyone has different ideas and this is where the communication with the public would be great to hear what those ideas and what those possibilities could be. But it is a placeholder, it is not set in stone, but it is a definite, you know, it's a game changer that we could supply to the city of Harrisburg. Go ahead.
That space has been used as a community space for gathering for free. One of the most successful operative events has been the Free Store, where people bring things to trade or to give to the community. Why does it have to be a place to generate revenue when there are so many other event spaces in the city?
And we like our music, I'm sorry.
People want to be able to come there and not have to spend money every time they go there. They want to be able to bring produce from their farms and bring it, the mushroom man came in or the person who had the good carrots came. There was a gentleman who lived here who had a relative in Halifax who brought spectacular tomatoes. These people don't want to pay thirty-five dollars to have a space. That space should be a free space for everybody to use.
So the market board will be the ones that dictate the cost or the ability to have that as a free space. That's not something the city's going to dictate that they must charge for a space like that. I think the point I'm trying to make is that we have opportunities, we have abilities to do just about anything there. So if the public and the market want to see this as a non-revenue generation on the lower space, then they don't have to. They don't have to, they don't have to generate revenues. They can continue it as a public service and I don't think, there's nothing the city's going to say that they do have to do that. That's more of a business decision that they will end up making. The upper portion, if we move forward with building all that, there's no reason that couldn't create, that could not create revenue long-term for businesses or, you know, be used in any number of different manners. But, you know, as I said, this is a communication, this is a conversation, so I wouldn't get too stuck on the fact that we are doing one specific thing or we're using it only for something to make money and we're going to charge everyone and we're going to change everything. I think we're just trying to embed what we have to give you as many options as possible.
We want what we have though. The community wants what we have restored.
And we'd like it open as soon as possible and not have to wait another two years. People have their hands up.
So, go ahead.
I would like to say that when you say the community, you probably have not spoken to everybody that lives near the Broad Street Market because I don't see a lot of Hispanic and black people here who speak for their interests, for example. And I would also like to, not a lot, not a lot, but I would also like to point out that if you're talking about historic renovation, that a building there for vendor space is more historically accurate than a concrete slab that we have now, which is much more recent than the windows that you're so worried about. So, if you're prepared to accept flexibility on your concrete slab being different from the historic one, you have to look at the use of the whole space and what historic compromises you're going to make throughout the whole space to get the most functionality.
And I think those are good conversations to continue to have, so.
And so, there was a major issue with the vendor space, that because the market operates from Thursday to Saturday, that is the reason that many vendors have an issue with the building. And so adding more vendors to that cycle with the still Thursday to Saturday schedule would also take away from the vendors that are already going to be go back into the brick building as intended, correct?
I guess I'm not quite following.
So, there's already issues getting vendors into the market sometimes because of the nature of...
Is it because it's a hundred-plus degrees in the summer?
I'm just saying, is the answer really adding more vendor space or is the answer making the experience better for the vendors in the building that we already have?
I think the answer is both of those.
Is it?
I think it is. I think giving, it doesn't have to be, but I think we can give you the opportunity and give you the options. And I think that it's our duty to give you the ability to make that choice, you know, not just limit you into, this is all we're doing, this is all we get, just be happy with it. We're trying to do as much as we can for as many people as possible. And there will be people that won't be happy with what we do, but we are doing our best to make as many people satisfied with what we do and make them benefit from what we do as possible.
I'd like to follow up on my observation about the free space. What can we do as a community to generate a petition or get signatures or have people involved into voicing their desires and their needs for this space?
So, when it comes to the Broad Street Market business decisions, I would recommend that the gentleman over here, we have Tito here from the Broad Street Market, he is one of our vendor reps for the market, you know, he has a stand out there and he is at the market on a regular basis. I would speak with Tito, let him know what your concerns are. He will absolutely give those concerns to us. If it has anything to do with the city, he will definitely let us know, you know, what the consensus is and how you're feeling. You know, again, we are here to serve the public, so we're trying to do our best to make sure that what you guys need is taken care of. But Tito would be a wonderful avenue to go to and, you know, he will absolutely listen to what your concerns are.
Each one of the previous managers had a different opinion about the free space, okay? And sometimes it was this much money, sometimes it was free. And we'd like to know as a community what it will be moving forward so that people have an opportunity to come into the city and start from scratch and do what they need to do.
Okay, so the Broad Street manager for the Broad Street Market is connected to the market. He's not, they're not a city employee. So they have their own policies, they create the dollar amounts, they have the billing structure that you guys are speaking of right now. So that is not a city of Harrisburg decision as far as what they are charging individuals for these rental spaces. Go ahead.
Is there a way to provide written comment to all this? I don't see a secretary, someone taking four minutes. Is there a place, a website, an email that you can say, I want these windows? Because I'm afraid a lot of this is getting lost.
Yeah.
It's not getting lost, she's putting it down.
Yeah, we do have someone up here.
I mean, there's a lot of people that can't come tonight.
She's got two pages already, she's been...
No, but I think there's probably a hundred good ideas that people might have. I'm just asking, is there a public website where you can provide feedback, constructive feedback?
So, we do not have a public website created for this. You can certainly put in writing any concerns or suggestions as you have, you can bring them to the market and, again, Tito over here.
Broad Street Market.
Yes, you can bring them to the Broad Street Market. And I think that, we're trying to, again, we want to accommodate as many people as possible. Don't want only people that have access to the internet to be able to give us this input, so.
Have you talked to the Broad Street Market about that?
Oh, yeah, we talked to the Broad Street Market. Deb, do you have more specifically?
In terms of all of the feedback and the comments about what the building should look like and what the space should look like, is the Broad Street Market Association prepared to take that public comment? Because that seems like it's very pertinent to your process of rebuilding the building.
Right, so we do have interaction with the Broad Street Market Alliance. We also have consultants that have numerous professionals in this industry that we are taking input from on a regular basis. We just had a three-and-a-half-hour meeting today just about the Broad Street Market. So, the Broad Street Market is one of the most front-facing projects that we have right here, so we're absolutely taking as much input as we can. As far as the public input goes directly to the city, we've not had an open forum. This is the first, you know, we keep saying we're in the infancy stage of this process. We're still in the design phases, so, you know, that's where we are as of now.
I have a question about with the architects and regarding to the seating that you have in the brick building in the west side of it. And then where the mezzanine would be over to the side and above it. Why aren't the vendors going back there like they used to be? We had vendors in the center, vendors on all the walls. So you're taking away from where vendors have been just to have people sit. Everybody goes in the stone building, there's great seating in there, or you sit out in the plaza and you can sit there, but...
You want to answer that one? I mean, we can always say...
I'd rather have the vendors there.
Yeah, well, so code does require that if you provide, accessibility code requires that if you provide a function on an upper level, you have to also provide that function on the lower level, so we...
Go through the mezzanine.
So you wouldn't want any public seating within the brick building?
Well, they had, on the east side they had it and where it was really...
Pre-code, pre-code. We need to upgrade code, we need to upgrade ADA efficiency.
We're really just, we're really just shifting that seating zone from the east side to the west side. And it's grown a little bit, but we've actually increased the vendor stall area overall. And it's grown a little bit, but we've actually increased the vendor stall area overall.
Go ahead, yes.
How are you upgrading the bathrooms?
One second.
What are you doing to the bathrooms since you have all the code things?
Yes, the restrooms are going to be fully redone, fully ADA compliant. And we'd have a lot of thoughts about how to make them safe, but also how to, you know, not make them front and center, but they're going to be centrally located within the building, but.
Those buildings are just.
So both buildings, we have plans to do complete ADA and code upgrades, too. As we keep saying over and over again, and you'll keep hearing it until we're done with this project, the brick building is our number one priority. Nothing else is going to slow us down from that. So if we have funding for the stone building at the same time, we can work in parallel with the brick building. But yes, both bathrooms, we do have plans on getting upgraded. When we upgrade those bathrooms, you will lose space. So there's another reason. There are many, many things that are working together here. We need to increase space somewhere else, i.e. the mezzanine area, because we will lose space whenever we start putting these upgraded bathrooms and you have to have your turn radiuses and everything else in your restrooms. But the answer to your question, yes. Both buildings, we will have upgraded ADA bathrooms.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, you're looking at a project that possibly will take like another two years to develop, correct?
Supposed to be.
Roughly, roughly, that's like an estimate or what I would guarantee. So have your community thought about like developing a committee that involves the community members? Because it's important to us to have our ideas heard. And I know going to the board or the Broad Street Market individuals that work there, our visions may not always be heard, right? So has there been thoughts of that, that are non-paid individuals, but as the community members that have enjoyed the market over the years? Yeah, it might not be exactly the way that we want it, but at least we have some input in the development of it.
You've already appointed, you have how many people on the Broad Street Market committee? So how many people do we have on? 13? Okay, so we currently do have 13 individuals on a Broad Street Market committee meeting. We meet monthly with them and we go over the design options and you name it. You know, they get the basic updates and we have the path forward with those individuals. So that is currently happening. If you're talking about broadening the net out and discussing with more people, that would be a decision.
Is that a standard meeting that is at the same time at the same place?
Yeah, so it's a virtual meeting.
Open to the public?
It is not currently open to the public. It is a virtual meeting, though.
To satisfy you, I nominate you as the chairman of the.
I'm saying something more than just, than just that. It's not open to the public. And I don't, I don't know all 13 members. They could be sitting in here, I don't know. Is anybody in here that's on there? Okay, then, okay. So then how do we know that our voices are going to be heard if some of them are not even here to even hear what we're saying? You know, like it should be more than just those 13. And I don't even know if they're paid individuals. I don't know. I'm seeing somebody that's not in the financial game right now that's getting paid, but just volunteers as I feel like we're all volunteering our time out here now, you know, to come and speak because it's important to us, you know? So something more than just those 13.
Extend the 13.
I have a comment just on my own. I know you guys are working hard and it's, you know, very heated situation. I'm trying to keep an open mind, but as I see the outdoor spaces being closed, it seems like a big departure from the historic nature of the building. I'm getting that with a lot of conversations I'm having, you know, on the side. I'm kind of feeling that in the room right now. And one fear would be if we marched down that road and we get to Harv and there's a rejection based on that, do we create a year delay going down a road that's not going to be successful? So that's my general concern right now, that they feel like a good bit of a departure from what we, you know, we're coming from and it could create a big roadblock in the future.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point to make that we on these committees and on these work groups are very aware of that. And we're very aware that that is a possibility. So we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we keep people informed on what's happening and we make sure that, you know, we minimize any sort of roadblocks we might run into because it's construction. I'm not going to tell you there's not going to be roadblocks, but we are doing our absolute best to make sure we minimize those. Hold on, hold on, hold on, sir. Hold on one second, sir, go ahead.
I mean, I think it's going to follow along the same track of what is that communication plan in the future? Because the flyer that I got for this meeting, it, for the why, isn't to get public input, it's to share concerns. So it already feels like you're very aware that there's some issue with the communication with what's going on with the market. And so what is the plan to address that? How will community input be taken in? And how will we know about what's going on with the market plan?
I think at this point, you know, I would definitely give your public comment to Tito in the market and we can, we can look internally.
Can I say something really quick?
Sure.
The market hears about things the same time the public does. Like the market board doesn't necessarily get views of this proposal before it's an article on Penn Live. So we're made aware of things that are happening but aren't necessarily given time to give feedback or like have the conversation. And maybe it's a level of the board that I'm not on, but like this graphic, I think we saw a day before it went public and didn't have an opportunity. So I don't know if directing your comments to the board and Tito is the right way to go because the answers that we can give people is that, well, the city's in charge of that and makes all the decisions and we don't really have to say.
I can answer that. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. It's exciting. I've been a vendor for over 20 years in the stone building and also have seen the market has gone up and down. I know we had a tragedy this past July, but I can tell you this.
Two Julys?
Yeah, yeah, this, two Julys, yes. But I can tell you this, with tragedy, you know, the vendors have become one. We've become a lot closer as vendors, as community, with massive support from the community. So just to say, you just have to think, you know, the vendors in the tent building, the tent right now, is going to be there for another, maybe, two more years. So to have this been proposed, to see, you know, what could be, it's exciting for all of us as vendors. We're going to, you know, march through this and hang in there. But like I said, the more eyes on the new building, we definitely want the historical specs, you know, the windows, the doors, et cetera. But we also need to monetize the facility. I mean, been there for a long time and it's hot, you know? It's 110 degrees cooking in there in the summer. In the wintertime, as of right now, in the tent, it's, sometimes it's 45 degrees, you know? And the vendors are in there working, trying to serve the community. It's exciting and it's also frustrating, right? Meaning you guys, you guys, I can show you that we have a vendor meeting every month on the same day as the board meeting. And we've been in touch with Dave and the city and the mayor's office. The vendors have actually seen this layout last month. And the architect was there to explain what the modules look like and what could be. And so from the vendor's perspective, we were excited. And like I said, we're going to be here for the city, for the community. Now it's just in the city's hands to just, you know, finish it, you know? And also to stay on course with the historical, you know, specs, so. Yes.
We love you so much. We love you so much. We know how hard you work. We know what you're doing on Wednesday morning. We know what you're doing on Sunday night, okay? Your week is full. Why do you have to burden, why do you have to bear this responsibility of being a liaison for the community? Why do you need to do that?
Well, that's, it's.
If I come to you, you know, we've had these conversations quite often.
Yes, yes, we do, Vivian.
I'd like to see you with a list of people who want a certain thing. You were comfortable with that? You want to pick that up?
Absolutely, because, no, because if you want to be a vendor, this is my life. This is my livelihood. This is our livelihood as vendors. It's not just three days a week. It's our life, you know? I've been in, I've been in this business for a very long time. I know the mayor before she was the mayor. I know the previous mayor. These, she's been serving the community for years. And I wouldn't tell you a story, without Mayor Williams, we wouldn't have a stone building years ago, like eight years ago. They were going to shut that down. They sat me down and gave me an eviction notice. And she was president of city council. She said, nope, that's not happening on my watch. I'll share that personal story. They sat four vendors down because we didn't have enough vendors in the building to create profit, to keep it running. So yes, I'm excited about the future.
You'll see me with a clipboard.
All right. Yeah, just, just keep supporting. It's all about, it's all about moving forward and, you know, bringing new ideas, but also keeping historical perspective, you know? We need produce, we need more produce, we need poultry, we need bread. We need all that to serve the community, you know? That's what I see. I see a bright future, you know, I really do. And as far as the middle, the middle aisle, the, where people sit and congregate, it's just an idea, you know? But sometimes it doesn't have to be, you know, it's just an idea. But I think our focus with the mayor and the city is the brick building first. And that's what we got from the previous meetings this past month, right? And through the architects. So as vendors, I'm very excited. I know our vendors are excited and we support, we support whatever's moving forward, so. All right, thank you.
One of the things that I think would be helpful with driving consensus in this room is hearing from other vendors beyond yourself, right? The people that are actually working in there and that the purveyor of these services and products, hearing from them where they stand, not just one person, but as a collective. So you guys, you know, I know you meet with them individually, but you guys, whether it's publicly, whether it's through social media, whether it's as a collective, hearing from the vendors as a collective about what things you think would benefit you, that would be helpful with driving consensus. Otherwise, we're going to be going in shit all day long and into the next two years. Respect.
All right, I think we'll take one last question here. So if you'd like to go ahead?
I have experience doing system design for industrial systems and things like that.
I can't hear you.
I have experience doing industrial system design and things like that. And one of the things that we learned from hard experience is you can't just look at the people who use a system now when you're looking at what the next system should be because there are people who are not using it now because of failures in the current system. And I think it's going to be very important to get feedback from people who live near the market and don't use it. Why don't they use it? Vendors who don't try to sell at the market but sell at other farmers' markets. Why don't they use it? Because there are obstacles and if small changes to your design could bring in more people, more vendors, more foot traffic means more vendors, more vendors means more foot traffic. And, you know, what are the obstacles? If the heat is keeping elderly people or people with some infirmities from using your market, that is a problem that could be solved and would be to everybody's benefit, for example. But there must be other ones.
Yeah.
In parking, access from the outside, the appearance of the outside of the building. I mean, there could be any number of strange things. And I'm concerned that your net is not going to bring in responses from people that are not already invested in the market the way it was on July 1st, 2023. And you'll just be recreating problems that have been an obstacle to other users, just generally.
Okay.
I have one concern about the stone building and getting it up to code and safe. As far as, you know, electrical, it's been a long, long time. And I know that that has to be done beyond just making it look nicer.
So the mayor is saying here that the Broad Street Market Alliance actually was able to receive a grant and they're going to put $350,000 into the upgrades of the stone building itself. So, and that's not even to mention what the city will be bringing to the table after the stone, or after the brick building has been, you know, completely funded itself. So on that note, you know, if you guys have questions later on, we can, we can answer things. I think that it would be beneficial for us to continue giving the public information whenever we get to some of our next milestones. And the mayor has vowed to put out public information on this as well. So you should see that here in the upcoming future. And I appreciate everyone coming by.
I don't have a question, I just had a comment. Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Bowers. I serve as the president of Harrisburg City Council. And I just wanted to know, it didn't really seem like there was a clear pathway to gather public input. You're always welcome to attend Harrisburg City Council meetings. I would recommend attending our legislative sessions. That way your comments can be added to the meeting record. We are also happy to orchestrate the ad hoc committee that was discussed of residents and community members to gain input that way as well. So I did want to make that welcome to everyone to participate.
All right, thank you.